Okay, we're live and I am so excited to welcome everyone to larger livestream conversation than than I posted. We have, we had too many amazing people that we wanted to make sure, oops. And one of them apparently has an internet connection that is a little iffy. So I will pass it over once we can get Ian back on. But in celebration and commemoration of Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, I wanted to invite leaders from our community who represent all different sectors and who also wear many different hats and have had experience and leadership across various facets of impact. So technically, we'll, we'll do half of the conversation with Professor Paul Watanabe, the Director of the UMass Boston Institute for Asian American Studies, moderating, and then we'll switch to a segment with questions and dialogue from the audience. So if you are watching, feel free to add your question to the Facebook or YouTube comment section. They'll pop up for us on this end and then we'll get to them later in the conversation. But I want to welcome again Paul Watanabe, Lisette Lee from Viet Aid, Ian So from Chicken and Rice Guys and representing a number of leadership organizations when it comes to Asian Americans in business and entrepreneurship as well. And thank you all for joining. I'll pass it over to Professor Watanabe.
Well, thank you, Counselor Wu, and thank you very much for this opportunity. I feel a little bit like somebody on the Stephen Colbert Show, who's able to have Stephen Colbert as a guest rather than moderating the program. So I think it's wonderful to have Michelle be a panelist on her own program, at least for a little while. So thank you for being willing to do that. And she adds her voices as the advertising for the session says, "Strong Asian American voices in the city of Boston." And we have three of them well assembled here. And I'm really proud to have Lisette and Ian to begin this conversation. So let me begin a question and I'm going to ask Lisette to respond first and then we're going to go in order. You know, you're strong Asian voices, you're strong Asian American people, but you stand on the shoulders of other people. And I just wonder if you might identify somebody, not an immediate family member, somebody an Asian American who particularly influenced you, who inspired you, who helped create you to be the strong Asian American person you are today. And let's begin with Lisette and I'm going to ask this of all three of you to kick off the discussion.
All right. Thank you, Paul. You know, I think that there have been a lot of very strong Asian American women in my life who've influenced me, who, you know, kind of developed me into who I am. But I think the, the first person is Professor Jean Wu, who is a retired professor from Tufts University. I took a class with her my freshman year on Asian American history and identity and it totally changed who I am. It totally changed my path in life. I'm not a doctor. Instead, I'm a community advocate. And so I owe almost everything to her.
Great. She's a wonderful person, a great inspiration to others I know as well. Ian? Ian is looking like he's not hearing me. We're going to switch to Michelle until Ian gets back online.
I'm going to lift up someone who is an educator as well. I grew up in, my, my family moved around a couple of different times in my childhood and it, now I realize that those moves were always sort of effort on the part of my immigrant parents to make sure that as soon as they were economically able, they were kind of upgrading us to the least expensive house in the next best school, public school district that they could afford. And so we moved around a lot and it wasn't, it often wasn't in school districts with many other Asian Americans. And so when I was younger, one of the first things that my parents did is they saved up so that I could have piano lessons. That was something that they wanted because they were both very musical. Oh, and they were not very fluent in English and found a piano teacher who was Taiwanese American in, in the area. And she was just this force of nature, Ms. Lucy Chu. And the piano lessons, even though it was very early on in my life and, and you know, not necessarily about anything other than the, the music of the notes. She always found a way to make sure that, that we were connecting about much more than that and set me on a foundation, both for something that I still love to do and, and really enjoy and is an important part of my identity, but also was an example of a strong Asian American woman in a position where she was teaching and conveying her knowledge to many other people, not all whom were, were Asian American. It was very powerful for me to, to be able to see that. And it was a rare example for me to see when I was growing up.
Wonderful. Ian, are you back online?
Hi. Sorry about that, guys.
Ian, did you get my question?
Yeah, it's a who inspired you outside of your family, right, Paul?
Yeah, an Asian American person?
Sure. Yeah. So I want to apologize. I'm, I'm in the middle of doing deliveries. We had one of our employees test positive for COVID. So we obviously had to exclude them and you know, that's kind of how it's been like these days. It's just like pitching in everywhere you can. So I apologize for that. I had to step in, you know, and, and, but parked, I'm safe and I'm ready to go. But to answer your question, Paul, Bill Amata from the IW Group, who is the founder of the Asian Chamber of Commerce. He's someone I really look up to. He's based out of LA. He does, he has his own marketing firm. He does marketing for the large corporations. But what really inspires me is he is so well-connected, so successful, but so humble. And when I think about being an Asian American leader, I think we have to forge our own paths, you know? I, I think every ethnicity has their own strength. Some ethnicities are great at being outspoken, inspirational, motivational through, you know, verbal communication. But you know, for, for Bill, he's someone that leads through humility and he leads through his action and, and not just words. So you know, that, that's the kind of leader that, that I would love to be when, you know, I get there.
Well, I know Bill Amata. He and I both served on President Obama's White House, on President Obama's Asian Pacific Islander Commission. And so I know Bill and he's a wonderful man and really an inspiration to people all over the country. So I'm glad you mentioned him. So I'm going to turn to actually what you're engaged in right now, Ian and Lisette and Michelle, and that is the COVID crisis and what it's meant for the work that you do. So Ian, I'm going to let you take off from where you began your conversation. Impact of the COVID crisis on you and your work and what you've been up to?
Yeah. So you know, it's, it's been extremely hard for small business and not just mine. So I'm part of the Chamber of Commerce, the National Chamber of Commerce for Asian American Business Owners. And so I talk to them daily about what they're doing and kind of my stories similar to theirs. And I will, the analogy I like to use is we're, us business owners are like fish right now and we're being chased by a shark. And really it's scary because we're, we're kind of competing against ourselves and the shark is really coronavirus. And there's probably two sharks. There's the coronavirus and then there's the economic impacts of what we're dealing with. So we're, we're almost in this intense competition against ourselves to out-compete against these, you know, big forces. And you know, I, for me, I'm trying to kind of, it's hard. So you know, the, the, one of our employees that got sick, you know, we had to shut down all our trucks immediately. We had to cancel a bunch of shifts, you know, where, and these are happening real time. You know, these are like two hours before we have to go serve customers that have prepaid and everything. The reason why we do prepaid is because, you know, you can't take payments anymore because it's not safe. So we're constantly adapting to all of these operational changes against this backdrop of coronavirus while we're, you know, in this kind of crazy environment. So it's, we're all kind of doing things we've never done before. I'm out all day doing deliveries. I haven't done deliveries in a long time. You know, the last order I forgot, I gave them a chicken instead of a hero. I had to drive back. So it's, I'm not used to this at all. So I think, I think all of us, you know, business owners are really just pulling up our sleeves and, and really, you know, getting, getting back to our roots in a way.
I'm sure you are. Lisette, you're at the Executive Director of Viet Aid. You're dealing largely with the Vietnamese community in the Fields Corner area. What has it meant for you under COVID-19 in your work?
Yeah, you know, I think before COVID-19 and the pandemic, I would often describe Viet Aid as a backbone organization because you know, we're really there to stabilize low-income new immigrants and working-class folks within Fields Corner or the Vietnamese community. And you know, I think more than ever, I think what COVID-19 has demonstrated to us is that the, the issues that we were working on before are the issues that get very much exasperated, right, during this crisis. And so, you know, our work, we, we have, to the extent possible, moved everything virtually. You know, we do wellness calls with our older adults instead of having them come into the building. Our preschool is operating virtually. And then, you know, I think our, you know, to the incredible staff of Viet Aid, they've been able to really pivot and say, you know, we can't operate the way that we used to operate. So we are going to do our best to make sure that we continue to be a lifeline organization and a backbone organization. That has meant for us that we are doing a lot of essential food work right now. So delivering meals to older adults who can't leave their homes or other folks who can't leave their home, grocery deliveries, being a meal site and partnering with the city of Boston on that. If you've ever been to our community center, our Great Hall has, it has a lot of rice right now. We have a lot of like produce boxes and, but that's, that's just essential, right? And that's what people need right now in that we've been able to, we've really committed to pivoting into making sure that like, if people are hungry, we will serve them food. We also have transitioned a fair amount of our staff capacity to helping with unemployment insurance assistance, PUA assistance, so that like, you know, the, the bare bones of what people need to live, we are able to support.
Sounds like the Big Hall there has turned into a warehouse a bit.
Yeah. I mean, there's some, it's actually kind of, it's incredible, right? And it also, I think demonstrates, I think the other really beautiful thing that we've seen is that a lot of community folks and a lot of people have pitched in and called me like, "Hey, can I donate X, Y, and Z to you? Can I, you know, can I do this and can I do that?" And I think it's been actually really, really powerful. We often talk about unity in the Asian American community and the Vietnamese community. And I think this is one of the very first times that I've really seen people come together and drop everything and say like, "How do we make sure that the most vulnerable are getting, are, are being protected at this moment?"
Wonderful. Thank you, Lisette. Thank you for your work. Michelle, your constituency is all the people in the city of Boston, including about 10% of the population. It's Asian American. And so your job is to really look out for the entire city, but also you're special to the Asian American community and pay attention to issues impacting them. What are you hearing or seeing in terms of your daily activity as the city councillor and the Asian American community and what it's confronting on a variety of fronts?
Yeah. I mean, this pandemic has hit everyone. But I think as with almost every other issue in Boston, we see just how disparate the impacts are and how different of an existence it is for folks who are able to have the luxury and privilege of working from home and, you know, still earning an income that way compared to essential workers and low-income families and many of our families and communities of color who have to risk daily exposure to the virus and, and struggle with a higher proportion of the jobs that may not have had benefits and therefore aren't receiving income at all and some, in some ways last to qualify for relief sources. So we're, we're seeing the concentration of, as Lisette was saying, the issues that were already in place before. And then on top of all of that, within the Asian American community, you're wearing this time of, that feels painfully familiar. I think, you know, for me as an individual, I remember growing up and experiencing instances of discrimination and, and, you know, whether it was people constantly asking me where I'm actually from or sort of mimicking different sounds or your eyes or this or that. And that feeling once again of sticking out so much as an Asian American, but also being in some ways invisible at the same time because all they're seeing is sort of the stereotype is, is something that I think our entire community is grappling with right now. And, and the worst part of it is that it is actively being perpetuated by the President of the United States. So I think we're in a moment where that, you know, the, the rise in hate crimes and the API-directed discrimination has, will have impacts way beyond the end of this public health crisis as well, you know, certainly on mental health and, and, but, but in economics too. We saw that in Chinatown since way before the, the virus was even really in the United States, that Chinatown businesses were, were already struggling. So I think that means for us, you know, it's a moment to think about what does it mean to have infrastructure as an organization, how to speak up, how to increase our power and, and come together internally, right? With the Asian American community is so diverse in so many different languages and experiences and, and demographics. And then externally as well, how do we use this moment to think about coalition building with other communities who also, you know, regularly, daily face discrimination?
Yeah, you know, Michelle, you talked about a phenomenon that, you know, we face often these, these challenges, they could be natural, they could be a storm or something like this or some military challenge or some health challenge like this. And unfortunately, at some particular point, we always want to put a face on who the enemy is. And on this one, we put the face, we put the enemy on this crisis and happens to be an Asian or Chinese American or Asian American face. And when we face these crises, you know, I think sometimes we see the best of the American people and some of the worst. We see the kind of things Lisette was talking about, people being so generous, wanting to donate food and help out and volunteer. But we also see the desire to scapegoat, to discriminate and to target people. And in this one, and this crisis, when it first began, when it was first associated with Asia, I said to myself, "Oh my God, this is going to happen again as it has happened many times in our history." So thank you for pointing that out. And let's talk a little bit about that aspect of it, that additional burden that's hitting our particular communities in terms of discrimination and even the economic impact that's associated with it. You talked about what's happening in Chinatown and other places in Asian American businesses like Ian's, I presume at the beginning. So do any of you want to talk a little bit more about that other element, about the way it's impacting the community additionally? They're, they're having to suffer through the health effects and all of that, but have this additional burden and anything that you can give some insight on that? Either Lisette or Ian or Michelle? Ian?
Yeah, I can weigh in. So our restaurant is, we sell Middle Eastern food. So people don't readily associate us with being Asian-owned or Asian cuisine or anything like that. But, um, you know, I, and, and in a way, we got lucky in that sense because I am an Asian owner, right? And a lot of those kind of businesses were impacted. So the way that I see it moving forward is I want to attack this head-on, you know? I, I think, I have faith that most Americans are not this way. I don't think most Americans are racist or I don't think that they have, they're actively want to discriminate against Asians. I think that it's a very small minority that's getting a lot of press. We obviously need to show that that's not right. But from my end, I want people to know that I'm Asian-owned business. On May 30th, I'm doing a benefit for Asian small businesses across America and I'm going to livestream it and I'm going to put my face out there and show I am an Asian business owner. This is my business, right? And if you feel like you don't want to patronize my business because of that, then I'll take those consequences. But I think being American, you know, I'm Asian American, that's important to me. And I want people to know that. I want to be proud of that. And you know, along with that, secondly, I want to show that Asian Americans, we're not just in our own silos. We're not in Chinatown. We're not, you know, in just the Asian community. We help others. And I think there's tremendous, Asians play a huge part in, in America that is sometimes underrated. I want to make sure that that's shown through, through me putting my face out there, but also in the ways that we give back, give back. And as a business, we always try to give back, not just within our community, but outside our community. And I think even now, it's really important to reach out to the other, other people, the Latino communities, the African-American communities and offer them help. And I constantly try to do that and see, hey, is there anything I can do? My small part, you know, as a business person, just, you know, we can make free food or whatever it may be. You know, so I'm doing my part to be out there and, and reach out to others.
Thank you, Ian. Lisette?
Yeah, you know, I think, I think this is a, probably a much longer conversation, but you know, I am really concerned and about reopening and what it means for small businesses of color, for Asian American small businesses, you know, the intersection of, you know, the economic impact of a, you know, operating at 50% capacity, right? And what that means for a small business or what, whatever that might look like. And you know, I think for Vietnamese folks, nail salons is a backbone industry, right? And a lot of nail salons are outside of the city of Boston, rely on immigrant and immigrant women as the workforce. And so, you know, for us, how do we make sure that as people are going back to work, that these, these women know their rights should, you know, an act of anti-Asian racism happen to them? In addition to, you know, potential other kind of like labor violations that might happen, right? I mean, I think that, that, that this is going to be part of the work that we're going to have to do over the next couple of weeks and several months as the economy reopens. How do we make sure that when these things are happening, right? The people who are most affected, that's going to really be the ones who are going to get the hate incidences know what to do and that, you know, that they're able to kind of contact elected officials or the Attorney Generals or, you know, our organizations.
Wonderful. Michelle?
Yeah, I, I don't have too, too much to add because Ian and Lisette are on the ground and, and just such incredible representatives of members of our community. I think when Lisette was saying on reopening, I, I really worry that when we get to, you know, put aside the, the public health concerns and is the MBTA safe and clean and are we thinking about childcare in the right way and this and that? But at the moment, when we have sort of officially transitioned into open or recovered, you know, what does that mean for our community? What does that mean for the Asian American community in terms of the lingering sort of feelings of, of discrimination? How are we going to use this moment as a community and think about where we go next from here so that it doesn't cycle back around again? As, as you were saying, Professor, that this is something that has happened time and again to, you know, maybe sometimes it's different subgroups within the larger APA community, but often this idea of being scapegoated, you know, could be around disease, could be around economic competition. But what are we, what's our sort of next phase coming out of this?
Let me ask a final question for this segment. Then we'll move on to the questions later, but, and, and I want to wrap up with sort of two questions wrapped into one. And if you can give me some short responses. One is taking off of what Ian, and, and both Ian and Lisette mentioned the term "community", and I think community is a critical factor. So I want you to tell me why you think building a strong and assertive Asian American community is critical for us today? Because there was once a time when we were under attack like that. A lot of people said the best thing to do is be invisible, that that's the best response. But I think you both embrace the idea of community, having a strong, assertive, organized Asian American community is critical to this. And then if you can add this additional piece, when we look back upon this period of time and the Asian American community, what do you want to be the legacy? What do you hope is the legacy for this period of time in the Asian American community in Boston? So if you can roll those two answers into one to conclude, I'd appreciate it. Let's begin again with Ian.
I think, I think Lisette and Michelle mentioned this, but this, this kind of crisis has brought the Asian community together. And I think in a lot of even American crises, we know both sides of the aisle politically come together. You see different ethnic groups and I hope this is that moment for the Asian community. In a way, I think with the whole model minority myth, you know, Americans think we don't have challenges. And sometimes I think Asian Americans don't even think that they face certain challenges. And I think this is a great opportunity for our community to come together. And what I would really, you know, preach is, is I think our community can be a little bit more patient with each other. I think as, sometimes culturally, we get so wrapped up in the, the operations and the details of things. You know, we, we tend to, our own harsh, harsh critics, you know? For example, little things like it's Asian Heritage Month. And I know a lot of groups though, they get upset with each other if they're scheduling events at the same time and things like that. But we have to focus on making the pie bigger and, and not just fighting over, you know, a slice of the pie that we feel like we're given, you know? And we need to work together to make that pie larger.
Thank you, Lisette.
I mean, I think to answer your second question first, I hope that resilience is probably the, the, the way that I hope that people are looking at the Asian American community, are looking at, you know, communities of color across the, across the country. You know, I, I, I think a lot about the word resiliency and I think a lot about like how people generally will claim it as climate resiliency. So like, do we have seawalls in place? But I actually think resiliency is the ability to stand in the middle of a storm and then be stronger afterwards and that it's not just about the storm, but it's about who you're protecting during it. And I ultimately hope that is the legacy or that's the impression that, you know, folks will, will kind of see what our efforts are. And you know, I think the other kind of, and I think it's kind of the same way we talk about the census, right? So like, it's, it's about, we, we tell people, "Fill out the census because we want to be represented" and that we want to make sure that resources are coming to the community. And you can only do that if you fill out the census. And I think in the same way for the Asian American community to say, "Well, we'll only get the resources. We'll only get the, the fight back against like anti-Asian backlash or backlash against like other folks of community color when we're willing to stand up and be present." You know, I, I think the, the model minority myth was a very deliberate thing to make sure that, you know, we become that invisible community so that they could pit us against other communities. And I think the only way to fight back against that is to do the complete opposite.
Great. Well said. And Michelle?
Yeah, I, I think for me, the strands of both that I would tie together are around coalition building, that this is a moment for us to not be in the silos, either, you know, within our, it's sort of smaller silos within the community, as Ian was saying, or even just in our own silo. I think oftentimes, given the very wide range of economic situations within our community, different languages and diversity, even I, political ideology, right? There's, there's different subgroups that, that represent different views. So where do we stand when it comes to other communities? And hopefully we recognize from this moment just how interconnected our issues are and that we can only solve the, the real long-term issues of our community, whether it's around housing stability or economic, you know, opportunity and agency by being in coalition with other communities.
Great. Well, thank you very much. I'll turn the show back over to Michelle, whose show it is. So thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. That was wonderful, Professor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I'm, I'm really excited that I get to moderate some of the live questions. So we have a few comments so far, folks sending wishes to Ian that- So we have a few comments so far, um folks sending wishes to Ian that hopes hoping that your employee recovers quickly and and that that you're able to to handle everything. Um some supportive comments from Eric and Jessica. Um shout out from Isaiah, good afternoon to you too. Um and we also have some questions come in from the R S V P forums earlier, so I'll take this opportunity to kind of turn it over and um make sure that that Paul gets his chance to weigh in with with the the depth of expertise and insights as well. Um, so let's start with this one. Um, how do we reach outside our Asian American echo chamber, right? We talked about that idea of silos and this and that, but how do, what what are the mechanisms by which we can actually do that? We'll start with Paul.
Well, I think that this uh this pandemic has demonstrated one thing, and that is that people of color are disproportionately impacted by this crisis in a variety of ways, the health impacts, the civil rights impacts and so forth. And I think that there's a natural desire to understand that this this crisis didn't create these disparities, it revealed them. And that we've got to be a part of the fight with our other brothers and sisters in other communities of color and other immigrant communities, et cetera, to fight the root causes of what's going on. And that's a a not a fight that any community alone can face. It's not even a fight that communities of color alone can can face. We've got to build a coalition around it, using your term a moment ago, uh Michelle. And I think that people like we have around this this little uh forum today, they understand, they've talked about the idea of coalition building and community building and building within the Asian American community and beyond it. And I think that that's critical. And I think that it we can do so. There is something that ties us together, there's a resonance about our experience and that other experience, and we got to build upon it, and I hope it will do so.
Thank you. Lisette, what do you think about reaching outside our um A P I echo chamber?
Yeah, I mean, I think very much what um Professor Watanabe was mentioning, and I also think that once we focus on issues, um then it's less about our racial identity, right? So housing stability is not something that is just going to affect um white and Asian Americans, um or, you know, um minimum wage or paid family leave. And so I think to to that point, right, I I I think my responsibility is to make sure the Asian Americans have a voice at the table and then go back to like me and say, hey, these are the things that um we need to work on, these are the policies that will uplift all of us.
Thank you. Ian?
I think it's as simple as for, at least for me, is I I when I heard about, you know, the African American communities, Hispanic communities, low income, I I basically reached out to leaders in in those communities and offered my help and and simple as that. Um and oftentimes, I'll say that a lot of times, maybe people may take up, not take up your offer immediately, but you know, it may take a couple of weeks, but they will reach out uh if they do need something. And I think it's about offering that help and knowing that you are an ally. I mean, and letting that be known.
Um, so I think there's a a question here that is maybe more for Ian, um both in your own experience and and just as someone who's plugged into the business community. So Sean is wondering if Asian American small businesses, really small businesses, have been able to benefit from the CARES Act and the federal relief programs, what are you hearing? And I think Lisette also from some of the the members that you serve in in Fields Corner.
Um, I would, I I'm not sure what uh really, really small businesses would qualify as, but uh ninety percent of small businesses have one to two employees or are under a million dollars. And if I think about those groups, I would say um I would say currently constructed the way the CARES Act is, uh it is, it's been difficult. It's it's been difficult for small businesses to um I think with some of the considerations that are coming out, that may change, it will be a huge benefit, but uh it's gonna be a huge challenge for small businesses. A lot of the CARES Act money is currently structured as a loan, so um this this money, I mean, we're not making money, that's money we're never gonna make back, right? So a loan is is not gonna be helpful, but it's not gonna save us the way that uh like a bank bailout or anything like that would be.
What about you Lisette? What are you hearing?
Um, yeah, I mean, I I think this is a really big challenge, and I think this is also the point in the conversation to talk about language accent, right? A lot of the the forms or the materials or even how to apply, if you are not um fully fluent, um if you do not have the ability to call up your bank very quickly, you're left out. And so we saw many of our small businesses um not being able to apply for the first or the second round of um uh P P P.
You know, if I may say, this question is something, we all talk about income and wealth disparities, and they're real. But there's a certain disparity in terms of cultural experience if it's used against a particular community's ability to get equity. And here's the case, for example, we did a study of small storefront businesses and and Fields Corner a few years ago, twenty-one, I think, uh small storefront Vietnamese businesses. Every one of them was not capital, every single one of them was capitalized not by using mainstream sources of capital, banks and loans and so forth.
Yep.
So when the CARES Act money came out, and the first notion was you worked through banks that you've had a relationship with is how you get the money, that structurally prevented these particular bus- businesses from accessing that money. And it's the understanding of that historical and cultural disparities that is critical when we go ahead with programs. It's it's certainly language, as Lisette pointed out, but it's these sorts of things that we got to understand when we're trying to provide relief and support and provide services that speak to the cultural and historical realities of various different groups of people.
Got it. Okay, so I think we're we're gonna wrap up soon. I want to throw out one more question from the livestream um and then wrap it with one of my own. So feel free to to mix and match and um as as we do one more round among everyone. So the question from Cheryl is that uh in my social and business circles, I find that A P I residents are less likely to self-identify as people of color and as a result are less active in speaking up about race-based inequity. Um how can we encourage more activism within this cohort? So I don't know if you have a uh, you know, especially Professor Watanabe, historical perspective on this. Um and the question that I had that we can also add to that is I've heard a lot from other communities who have reached out and said, what can we do in this time to stay with the community? So what's one recommendation you have for people who want to be supportive in this moment?
Well, I'm gonna actually say from my experience, and it's a more positive one, I think Asian Pacific Americans are are joining with others as leaders in recognizing the common struggle that we face. So I'm gonna look at the glass as half full rather than half empty. And I see them joining in coalitions as community-based organizations, as political leaders and so forth, to try to move together a common agenda. An agenda that that is focused on inclusion and equity and bringing it all together. And to that extent, I think Asian Americans, I I don't, I'm not here to sort of tell Asian Americans that they're particularly unaware of their of the their identity, many of them are, many of them aren't. And to me, I don't think there's any way to generalize about whether we do see ourselves as people of color or not. There's nothing, there's, your experience will tell you that you're a person of color in this society. The dominant society will let you know you're different, whether you think of yourself as not, as so.
And Paul, um a suggestion if if uh recommendations for ways that if if other communities want to be supportive in this moment?
Oh, you're asking me?
Yeah.
Uh, we we do have to reach out, and we do have to educate, and we do have to have people understand, as I said, Asian Americans are experiencing this particular crisis in a way that's a little different from other non-white groups. This is our Muslim and Arab American brothers and sisters experienced the fallout from the uh nine eleven situation. And that is we're targeted because of this particular situation. And the more we let people understand that this is a pattern, that it affects people of color, people who are perceived different out of the mainstream, we can gain allies and we have gained allies in the in the struggle, in this battle. And we got to be allies during their struggles as well. That that's the 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 bargain that we enter into.
Lisette?
Yeah, I mean, I think the the framework that like Asian Americans currently are being um targeted is because it's convenient, right? I think that that's come up a few times. Um, you know, I think for us to remember um that, you know, if racism is considered the boot of oppression, then the commonality is that we need to unite to fight against racism and racism for all. Um and I think for us to kind of as a community to remember what this moment is saying about us, um and, you know, to also, I think it's been mentioned a few times that Asian Americans are not the only racial group that is being affected by it, right? Like the disparity within the Black and Latinx communities and the Native American communities is extraordinary as well. Um and so the, it it is about the the unification is to make sure that we remember that the ultimate boot is it's racism and white supremacy.
Ian?
Uh, so to answer the kind of the the social business circle uh question uh and and how to get Asian American leaders to speak up more, I think it's important to look at our identity as twofold, is the the Asian part and the American part. And, you know, I said this earlier, I think a lot of times we are very comfortably embracing our Asian aspect. Uh but the American aspect is we still need, we still have a responsibility uh to be the face of our companies and the face of our organizations. I do see a lot of Asian business owners be uh kind of behind the scenes. They don't want to list their photo on their website as the founder or things like that. But for me, I look at it as as a responsibility um and part of honoring my identity as both Asian and American. And it's not easy. I'm definitely uh naturally very introverted, but it's it's just like any skill, speaking up, um presenting, speaking in groups, it's it's a skill, and you just go out there. I do do little little presentations, larger presentations and take classes. There's plenty of YouTube, there's free Toastmasters, so there's a lot of resources out there, and and it's a skill that that is needed, especially now for business people uh to to be out there and represent their brand.
Got it. Well, um that is all the time that we had for this. I want to thank each of you for this great conversation over the last hour, uh but more importantly, for all that you're doing for our community and and the city of Boston and beyond. Um so please uh join me in thanking Professor Paul Watanabe, uh Yit Aid Executive Director Lisette Lee, um Chigana Rice, guys, co-founder, co-owner, Ian. So thank you, everyone, and.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor.